All right. It is Monday, April the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. Can you believe it? Done with another month. We'll call our workshop session to order. And the first item up on the discussion is water conservation.
Yeah, Council, the reason why I asked to bring this up was, um, it dawned on me that it throughout my time of getting ready in the morning, the amount of water when I walk over to the sink and turn it on and all that water runs through, or you turn the shower on and all that water, water runs out until it gets hot. It just dawned on me that maybe we can start, um, looking at ways to conserve water. This is by all means not a mandate. I don't want this to be a mandate on the citizens or the builders or anybody that comes into town. Uh, but it did, uh, kind of come funny to me that as I'm going through town, talking to potential voters, that they said that this has been initiative since the seventies. And, uh, that doesn't surprise me. And I'm sure it will be an initiative for years and years to come, but just ways a- as, as it states here for different water conservation, uh, apparatuses in the house, different grasses that one could maybe look at, uh, putting in their yard as opposed to maybe St. Augustine, which we know is a, uh, huge, uh, takes a great amount of water to preserve. So just ideas like that to try to get the dialogue and conversation going. I know, I think there's Van and, and our city manager put some additional, uh, things on the agenda for us tonight to can, to look at and hopefully the citizens can, can read them and maybe, um, start to think of ways to conserve water.
So John and Van have been, um, conducting some research and, and a lot of initial water conservation strategies are education based, so pushing that information out to citizens. And there is information available on our website and through various other entities as well. I think John and Van gathered some more information for you guys to discuss.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, as we started out looking at this, uh, we reached out and looked at some neighboring cities and looked at some of the things to do. Uh, Darren said, number one is, is good education for citizens and water users. Excuse me, lots of, uh, conservation opportunities. A lot of ci- cities, neighboring cities, larger cities, kind of all follow the same suit, so a, a really good, strong conservation plan, putting that into effect is, uh, very helpful. There, there's a lot of programs such as the EPA. They provide a, a water sense program where cities can actually join that and they do offer incentives, uh, education, they promote new home builders to join water sense where that encourages them to, to use water sense, uh, products such as showerhead, aerators and that type of thing. There's, uh, opportunities for citizens themselves to get on and pledge, uh, not to use more than certain amounts of water. Uh, so, uh, along with, you know, many other tips, of when to use water, when to water, when not to water. I haven't really, in my experience, found any other cities or any cities that are currently banning any certain types of grass, but a lot of them do, uh, uh, give rebates for native trees, shrubs. Several of them, uh, also encourage zero scape, which there's rebates. Uh, tons of rebates on different types of appliances, fixtures, uh, many, many different things, so. The options moving forward are endless. Uh, it's a pretty big thing. Like I said, I, I think giving a really good conservation plan in place for starters, which we do have stuff related in the ordinance. But I, I, I think a lot of these other cities around do have a real, a lot of information that, that is available up to us to, to create that conservation plan and effort moving forward, so.
Do you, do you know of any, uh, cities here in central Texas that have adopted a conservation plan?
Uh, yeah, uh, City of Georgetown has one, City, City of Liberty Hill, Round Rock. Pretty much everybody has one, as, as Van noted when we were responding here. They, they kind of all follow suit, right? Eric, everybody's kind of does a couple of different things, you know, certain cities use Water Smart, some of them use Water Sense. Uh, there are programs that with their metering system that could be put in that customers can actually log in and view their daily water usage. So, you know, if, say if they went in and said, we're bound to not use more than ten thousand gallons of water a day, or whatever it is, ten thousand a month. They will get alerts notifying them, hey, your own pace to exceed that. So that, that keeps people real conscious of that. And on top of knowing, you know, summer months when they use a lot of water, hey, my, my water bill is going to be super high, so it makes them real conscious of that, so. Like I said, lots of, lots of different options, uh, all kinds of programs out there, so just, I'm sitting down, taking the time, looking at other cities ordinances, looking at our ordinances and then seeing what, what best suits our needs, I think is probably the best way to go.
These, these ordinances, they're not a, a gotcha, so to speak, type of deal. They're, they're a volunteer
Yeah.
way to do it, because I know other states, you know, especially on the west coast, have done this and, you know, people go to jail over it and just all kinds of havoc. I don't want that to be brought here to our state.
Yeah, there, you know, there are other cities that have different te- tiers and of course, if you're not irrigating where you're supposed to be, there are going to be some penalties and fines, so. Like I said, a lot to look at, a lot of different options, there are a lot of good tools available to, to help, help us get one that fits our needs established and, uh, works, works best for everybody. Ultimately, I think the, the goal is to conserve water that we desperately need and are going to need for many years to come, so.
When you speak about programs, you're talking about the, the, um, federal or state programs that monies are available, you know, assistance matter, either the city or the citizens, just ballpark.
Yeah, I do believe that the EPA and potentially LTRA and BRA do offer some assistance. I'm not su- one hundred percent sure about funds. Um, there are cities, the City of Austin, for instance, to, they have an online toolbox where customers can go in and, and submit a form that says, you know, we're requesting two low-flow showerheads. So the City of Austin will provide those, they provide sink aerators, um, they do, uh, irrigation, they'll give you rebates for irrigation checks, there's some cities are doing rebates for completely removing your irrigation system completely, because I mean, that's seventy-five percent of your, your water usage in a home, so. Lots of, lots of opportunities like that, rebates for.
Well, I guess my question comes, comes to the City of Austin has a very much larger budget.
Sure, yeah.
Are they rebating or are they being reimbursed for those rebates from some other organization or, and you may not be able to answer that question.
Yeah, I, I don't have that information right now, but that's something we can definitely find out.
If, if we were to go along those lines, how do we pay for it?
Yeah, sure.
First question. I mean, we, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea, but how do we pay for it?
Well, and like I said, with the Water Sense program, with the ability for contractors, new home builders, having the ability to join that and all of the Water Sense, you know, toilets and showerheads, that, that's one way of doing it, but it's, it's other people that, you know, are older homes or whatever that are already built, you know, encouraging them to, to move forward and look at some of these brands and options and stuff too, so. As far, as far as funding and stuff, that's something I'll take a little bit more into.
Oh, yeah, Austin, it's Georgetown, uh, isn't that Georgetown? Uh, what do they do as far as conserving water in the, one of those golf courses over there? Do they follow the same logic or just the reasons?
The city golf courses, uh, St. Georgetown, those are reclaimed irrigation. So there, there are no, all the parks there, um, like I said, the Sun City Golf Courses, Berry Creek, those are all reclaimed uses, so. That is another thing that, uh, that we did notice that the City of Austin is also, they allow gray water systems to be put in homes so they can reuse, you know, sink water and, uh, shower water for irrigation purposes, rain water collection, but yeah. Moving forward, I, I definitely think reclaimed irrigation. We get to the point where we have that kind of leftover at the plant, it would be a real, real good choice moving forward, so. Go, go purple, I guess, as they're saying on the hydric purpose, so that's what a lot of cities are definitely do that. And I know Georgetown is currently, uh, expanding in great depths their, their reclaim system, so.
Mr. Chairman, what, what, and I've seen other communities that do that reclaim, uh, water. Um, and I've always wondered how in the heck that they did that, how they separated that? And I mean, how would we do that, just say for our golf course or our, our parks and that type of thing, if nothing else?
Well, we'd have to add a little bit of treatment at the wastewater plant, because that's where it's coming from, is the wastewater plant. And then provide the piping and the storage.
You'd have to put in more pipe, yes, you'd have to put in a direct pipe to that particular park.
Yes, totally separate piping system from the wastewater plant to the golf course.
So that's a, that's a major, major expense is making that happen.
Yes, right.
Yeah, but the piping is a big thing. As far as, there's type one reclaim and type two, one's safe for human contact, one's, one's not, so. Um, as far as drinking and whatnot, so piping and structure, yes, that, that'd be a big deal. Um, as far as coming through treatment, basically, everything's already treated, meets, uh, type one or type two. So basically, you have to have a trace for residual in reclaimed irrigation, uh, before it's re-introduced back into the environment, so. Pump station to pump that and piping, yes, definitely, definitely some cost to it, but, but the return on that, a pretty good idea.
Would, would, do you think there would be a payback on that? Because I know it's costing us right now, just with freshwater irrigating and that type of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember the golf course uses the creek water.
Okay, all right, yep, yep. And because the salinity in that sulfur creek is so high, don't they have to, I heard, use twice as much water? No, that's not true, no?
He, I know he adds a lot of chemical to the, to the grass because of the salinity.
Chris, do you want to speak about that? Yeah, I mean, as far as the irrigation, I mean, I've talked to TCEQ and them on that, and I know we have some people who's water rights. So what they have, or my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, maybe it is, as I just met with them not too long ago. We have senior water rights, they date back to the early nineteen hundreds. So I think we have the second oldest in the county, maybe, or maybe even in this area. Because my question was, because he said that with, because obviously all this directly flows down into Stillhouse, which now, I could be wrong. I think Georgetown pulls out of Stillhouse as well. So my understanding is that Dell and some of these other, I guess corporations that are in and around Austin have pushed really hard for their senior rock, water rights to override some of the people that would be, I guess, upstream from them. But it's my understanding that it won't have any effect on us, we can call it such, we want to, we want irrigation golf course. As far as the salinity, as it is very high, but we apply products to the golf course on a monthly basis. Especially to the greens, not so much the airways or tee boxes, but mostly to the greens, uh, to, uh, offset that, offset that.
Any other questions?
So these programs that we're talking about, um, you could get, I mean, I guess you could get low-flow showerheads, I guess this is for older homes, because new build homes already have low-flow fixtures.
Right.
According to the law code.
Yeah, it's, it's making them available to people who, who don't currently have them.
So through that program, a homeowner can apply and, and get those at a cheaper rate or how is that?
Yeah, they do, uh, do offer, uh, on the EPA side, I believe, the Water Sense, they do offer rates, cheaper rates for purchase of those, but like I said, once again, the, the funding part of that, if there's any, I'll, I'll have to look more in depth on that part, so. It's what, what could be an benefit to us and the citizens.
On, on your agenda here, you, you ought to put, uh, banning the use of certain grasses. Where, where did that come from or how did, what's that about?
I believe that was a question that we were asked, um, like I said, uh, I think it's due, you know, thought of St. Augustine being such a high water user compared to Bermuda, um, so, like I said, I, I'm not aware that any cities have restricted St. Augustine or any other type of grasses, but have moved forward with the, uh, drought tolerant plants, trees and grasses and zero scape and that, so.
I've, I've found in the past, people being allergic to certain types of grasses, so I would not be in favor of restricting any types of uses of grasses. I don't really believe that.
Yeah, that's our, our, our goal is not to restrict.
Place to be, no.
But just to maybe guide to a less water using, more natural.
I think I would go towards the education part. And these grasses tend to use less, not known in Las Vegas, right, saying go use a lot of that grass.
Yeah, is it, with the, with the way this is, the way this is listed, it looks like these are things that we're trying to try to put into the ordinance and I'm totally against that. I have no problem with education, but that's not our rule, so.
It's, in the very beginning, this is not a mandate, I don't want it to be a mandate, I just wanted it to conversation to exist.
Counsel, if I may, the intended cover was all information we saved from an email from Captain Marhider. It was not staff, that, that was his thoughts, his ideas, and that's why I was directed from him to be the discussion item for tonight. So that's not from staff, it's all from the.
Was it copied and pasted from the email?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, these are just merely suggestions, not mandates, not voting on it, nothing, just ideas.
I would like to point out also the, the point with the water heaters. And the tankless water heater, I don't know if you're talking about gas or electric, but either way, it's going to add undue cost to the build of new homes, which in turn is passed down to the homeowner and we're trying to find affordable housing, not more expensive housing. Uh, and it doesn't solve the problem, it's stated in this agenda either. No matter where a tankless water heater is positioned in the home, it's still going to have that volume of water between the water, water heater and faucet and piping, so.
You, you have that cold zone. I, I currently have one in my house, it's in the garage, my, my master bathroom's only other in the house, and it takes good two and a half, three minutes for that to, to get up there. Once it's hot, it'll run all day long, but yeah, you, you still have that, that cold zone.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Move on to number three, a discussion regarding Landpass's economic, oh, no, Seth.
Mayor and Council, um, you'll recall I sent an email after the last EDC meeting of the EDC board that directed me to go ahead and open up a job posting for EDC director. I had several council members request the ability to discuss that tonight, since it is kind of in contrast with what council had sort of directed at our council meeting not long before that, so that's why this is on this discussion tonight.
I'll give you a little bit, but, um, the EDC board, uh, in our last meeting, we discussed, um, hiring a new director. My understanding, speaking with a couple of members, is that they feel, um, it's, and it's my feeling as well, that it's important that Aaron be allowed to do her job, as city manager, and by not also do economic development director job. Having a face in the community, uh, is most spoiled by a previous EDC director. Um, being out there in the community was imperative. Uh, don't feel like, not that Aaron is not doing a bad job, only the wrong. But there are other things that could be being done that probably aren't being done, um, because we don't have that point first.
Can you identify that, Charlie? What, what are we not getting done?
Uh, the business development and working with local businesses, being in there every day, going visiting with local businesses, uh, seeing what they're needing, checking with, checking in on them, seeing what their needs are. Um, business retention, uh, we used to do what we called business retention visits. Um, and once a month, we would go out to a certain business, remember the group of EDC members? Uh, not a forum, obviously, um, go meet with the director and go visit the business, um, and hear about what it is they do and what, and what their struggles are. Um, that's something that has been missing.
For the, for the sake of, of, uh, and I'm just throwing out ideas here, we have a, a Chamber of Commerce, um, that does awesome, that is part of their job too as well. Is there any kind of partnership that the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce could be?
Not to my knowledge, because there's not a person in the position of an EDC director, so.
Well, in the big favor of, of, what, three previous EDC directors? And, I mean, I, I don't think any, anything you're talking about is, no.
And the EDC, the other thing is the EDC is one of the, maybe according to our previous agreement, they're, what was it, sixty-six? Some of our percentages.
Yeah, I, I don't see why. Yeah, I don't see why it's a money one, but I don't care if the EDC wants to or not. That's wasting money, and we don't need that, in my opinion.
Yeah, so do you want to eliminate the EDC?
If that's something they have to do, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, that may be going from two up to a hundred real quick.
Well, they'll put it out there. I mean, like I said, the board feels like, these are people that leave a point in. And they feel like it's important that they have a.
I keep wondering how that, uh, Charlie, that you said that the EDC director, some of the EDC board and the director used to go out and do business visits, but I guess that doesn't happen no more, because they don't have a director?
No, and I wouldn't expect Aaron to know the good, because I personally want her to do her.
No, sure, I, I'm taking the board to go on there, I, I can't the board go do business visits.
I, I agree with that.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I also don't business.
I think that one of the things that happened with the last person that we hired, I think we rushed it. Um, I wasn't for that person, but that wasn't, anyway. Um, but I think that if we do put it out there, we need to make sure we hire the right person for the job that we're looking for. And if we don't have the right applicant, like the last time we interviewed, we didn't have the right applicant, and we shouldn't have hired.
That was not part of that process.
Yeah, well, that's how we got here. We didn't have the right applicant, so we pushed the position and filled that position, which we did not need to fill, and I don't think we should make the same mistake again.
I, I agree, but what I'm saying is if we do put it.
I wouldn't need to, I agree.
I, I agree with that too, but I'm just thinking, if we, if that is how we go forward, we don't need to just hire somebody just because we took the job out there for the right person to apply.
And I, i- if I may, I'd like to give the Council some numbers and, and mind me correctly if I have any of this incorrect. But, um, the EDC director position is paid out of Fund Twenty Two, which is the city's economic development fund. That's separate than the economic development corporation's economic development fund. So we're dealing with Fund Twenty Two, the city's, and Fund Seventy Five, which is EDC's. So in the city's economic development fund budget, um, budgeted for this fiscal year for salary and benefits, so that's retirement, payroll taxes, employee insurance, we have budgeted a hundred and twenty-three thousand seventy-five dollars. Um, also budgeted in that fund is technically sixty-one thousand five thirty-seven from EDC's contributions to that, and fifty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars from the electric fund to cover the remainder of that salary. Again, that base salary is eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. The last EDC director was hired at a hundred thousand dollars, so your payroll taxes are going to be higher, your retirement contributions are higher. In Fund Seventy Five, which is the EDC's fund, they've budgeted sixty-five thousand dollars to contribute to Fund Twenty Two, which is the city's fund, or the seventy. So the, the city is bearing over fifty percent of the cost of that, that person.
Like this person who appointed that we had with the EDC.
I, I'm just going back to the budget and numbers for this fiscal year.
And there was a mistake, because that's not the agreement that we have with the EDC.
The board has complained for years.
Well, I'm saying that's the way it's been funded for years, I'm not sure if there's anywhere.
I feel bad about names, because, Council, am I wrong? I mean, the EDC can do this, and we will cover additional costs in order to hire a previous.
Yeah.
Just on this last, just on this last hire.
Yes.
Just on the last.
And so it hasn't, so we could change back since the last hire.
The budget wasn't amended to accommodate the additional salary.
It was just to accommodate the extra salary that was given to the last EDC director. Traditionally, the last.
I would say that is not the assumption of the EDC board.
Well, historically, that's the way it's been done.
But maybe we need to continue to do it then.
Right, so, so I think what I want to point out in that is that the city's electric fund subsidizes at least fifty-five thousand of the cost of hiring.
Half of all the, half of all the payroll.
Half of all the payroll.
Yeah.
Can, can somebody tell me what the, the investment returns, uh, on the EDC director then over the years was, I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, if I look at the business part that we hired EDC directors on, you know, we've got a pretty good infrastructure out there, but it's still empty. Um, I just, I would like to know what that position contributes and has, not contributes today, but has contributed. Because I think in any new hire, you've got to go back and you've got to look at the track record. And see the direction that this person is going, and I'm looking for a, a salesperson. I've got to, I've got to see some verifiable results, or I'm not looking at salesperson. And that, that's the only thing that comes to mind, and, and, and may, maybe there is, maybe there is some verifiable returns on investment dollars.
I haven't researched that enough, Mayor, but, um, you, I think everybody here knows those returns have not been there. I think everybody understands that. And I, and it's not, I, I really don't understand the situation, just to hire somebody, hire somebody. Unless they're putting a valuable effort into the community, I just don't think we, and, and we keep saying the same thing, the EDC does. If we just had this person, then we could do this. If we just had this person, but it hadn't been done, the last, how many, eight years we've been here, I mean, starting with Randy. But I mean, what has she done, like she's talking about, or returned? I don't think we can, I don't think we can.
There's some work been out there in Manny's tenure, the Life Safety Grant was, was created, she did a really good job. Um, better than most with marketing and getting out there, I, the COVID grant administration was, was part of Manny's, so there is, there has been some value.
Yeah, and so has the Chamber, so that, that's my point. I mean, the Chamber's doing the same thing the EDC's does, but it costs us. Hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Mayor, I'm, I'm with you. We, we have jammed two EDC directors that refuse to live here. So refuse to live in the city that they're trying to sell. There's zero return from the business park, a lot of infrastructure put out there. Uh, we, we can't just throw money at somebody in hopes that they do a good job selling their passes and let passes business, it's just, it does nobody any good. Uh, maybe we look at different leadership, or maybe we look at a different person or the type of background we're looking for in the EDC director, not just, but, and, and, and that person has to live. If, if, if I'm in perspective business and I'm asking, well, why don't you live in Landpass? You're trying to get me to move to a town that you don't live in, then you refuse to live in. What's the benefit? So I think maybe we put this on the agenda for the new councils to, to look at, do we shut it down or what's the path forward?
And that's going to be my next position, is I challenge each and every one of you to come up with a solution. Because the EDC board has come up with, they feel like is the best solution, and I'm not hearing any of that.
No, the, the EDC board's been thrown for, you know, business park and everything else for years and years and years, and it's done nothing, and gotten nothing in return. They got to put some money.
Let me, let me offer a solution, Charlie, on this, uh. I think our citizens here in Landpass are passionate with, you know, I, I think about different groups. And I know that there's, there's part of these groups, I think that, you know what, if you unleash them, uh, and you give them that direction, I think you could, I know other communities that have volunteered, uh, organizations in their EDC group that have gone out and done phenomenal things, and, uh, I just, I think there's enough people around here that, that would, uh, get behind that.
No, Mayor, I encourage you to come to the next meeting and give your submission.
Okay.
You want to, and another solution, infuse that money into the Chamber. There's, there's, they have done a good job, the Chamber has, so that's what you do. You want a solution, there it is.
Use it in the Chamber.
Infuse that money into the Chamber. If they have to hire additional people, which we know they did a good job, there's a solution.
I don't know the legality of that, because the EDC is its own corporation. She does stand right in front of you, and I don't know how, and the Chamber has some kind of setup that, well, this is right there, it's one of the. She does stand right in front of you. And I don't know how, and the chamber has some kind of setup that, well, this is right there between the women.
Chambers of Commerce can absolutely administer economic development programs. It takes a contract between the, um, economic development, or I'm sorry, the city council giving, I'm sorry. Um, chambers can absolutely contract with the city to administer economic development funds. Um, did it in a past life, uh, brought it back in-house to the chamber in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen in Brady. And it was simply a contract between the city and the chamber for administration of this fund. They call it, or all the same rules, like what we would if it was an internal position. Um, the chamber Brady was split between chamber tourism and economic development.
Right, we need to bring that to the board, the EDC board. That's an option.
Any other questions? I'll ask. We have a motion to adjourn our workshop session.
So do we.
All in favor?
Aye.
All rights?
Mr. Gray, here, we thought we'd thank you for this great opportunity to not come together as a group to share some information, make some good decisions. And we just ask that you be with us, so that anything that's coming out, be a part of it, the whole community, which is your desire. We, uh, thank you for all the benefits of being here. We, uh, thank you for our safety. We, uh, ask that you be with us, and until we meet again, as in always, Jesus' name, the prayer, amen.
Welcome in, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the EDCs, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, tonight we have some, uh, proclamation and presentations. Um, first one up is our professional municipal clerk week. And we have a couple here, a couple of them. If you'll stand up. And hey, hey.
I'm not a municipal clerk.
Yeah, you are. Fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerk Week. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the borough. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerk continues to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through the participation and education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of the state providential, county, and international professional organization. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Earl Pierce, mayor of Landpasses, do recognize that the week of May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerk Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Becky Sims and Kylie for your vital service that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community of Landpasses that you represent. Thank you.
A little easier.
Everybody home? Everybody home? Okay. The next is a proclamation that we're proud of for the history of Storms Restaurant's seventy-fifth anniversary. And, uh, talk him tonight, he says he'll provide the council for the next fifty-two weeks of, uh, council meetings and burgers.
Sure. And yes, opinions.
Whereas the Landpasses City Council and Mayor recognizes extraordinary contribution of the storms had made throughout the community since nineteen fifty. When the Dairy Queen eats opens it, when the Dairy Queen eats, opened the doors on Key Avenue. Whereas in nineteen seventy, storms was born and has been a constant staple for Landpasses community, providing the same great menu with a few treats. Whereas the locals rave about the food and make sure it is one of their first stops. And when they come home to visit, who doesn't love the storms special? Whereas many local youth sports teams have celebrated their wins and losses with soft-serve cones, milkshakes, frosted Dr. Pepper, or possibly a root beer float. Visiting storms for any occasion makes everything better. Whereas the Landpasses community is better because of storms and is proud to be a part of their seventy-fifth anniversary. Whereas in recognition of their success and contribution, the city of Landpasses, we are pleased to rename the Five Eighty Sports Complex as Storms for the day of their event, March September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, I, Earl Pierce, mayor of the city of Landpasses, do hereby declare city council of the city of Landpasses to proclaim September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five as Storms Day and respectively rename the Five Eighty Sports Complex as a Storms Complex for their event for the day. I have herein to set my hand and have cause to seal the city of Landpasses Texas's BFX on this twenty-eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five.
You've got to pick all those guys. I'm like, I know all of them are here.
Public hearing, citizens comment. Uh, any citizen who does desire to address the city council on a matter that is not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented up underneath this agenda item. And there is none?
Eddie's not talking. Eddie, you've got nothing to say.
Citizens comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda, and we have none. Discussion and possible actions regarding approval of amendments of the regular meeting held on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. I didn't see the corrections. May I recommend approval? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three point one, consent agenda, discussion possible actions to consider the second reading of an ordinance approving a request for specific use permits for property described as lots five, six, and seven, block seventy-nine, Landpasses Springs Company. First addition currently known as five oh five North Summer Street, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County, to allow for a new accessory unit above the existing garage. Discussion possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance to abandon, vacate, and convey a sixty-wide, unimproved R O W northeast of U S Highway one eighty-three and the S J Harrells addition in Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County.
I'm going to approve it, consent agenda.
Second. We'll move to four point O, boards and department reports.
Okay, uh, so I was able to do kind of a comparison between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Like I said, I've had one year under my belt. Uh, just real quick, as far as, uh, what I did is I just kind of took your memberships, that was your, obviously, your members, your trophies, the trophies that they pay as well as your chevroles. Um, as far as twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, the comparison there, we had about three hundred and sixty-eight members up consistently through the year last year. Uh, and we also had this, I'm sorry, the same in twenty twenty-three. Couples memberships went up about six, and family memberships went up fifteen. Uh, the trophies went up approximately fifty. What we kind of noticed with that was with the addition of some memberships, obviously, we're running short on carts, cart, uh, cartships. So a lot of people are just paying the trophies, either bringing their carts in on trailers or just dropping it locally in the town that they live in, so they can drive it out. Uh, chevroles, that number's a little off because a lot of those chevroles, like I said, I ran this from January to December. In twenty-three, a lot of that gets paid in December, so that shows it can be a little bit higher. But we consistently have those cartships full, so we're right at around one forty every year. They, they are never ends. Um, on the next page, I just did, uh, this is really what I'm going to call our daily fee players, kind of our, I'm going to say out of town, but people that don't have the memberships, obviously. In, uh, twenty twenty-three, our green fee revenues was about two hundred and thirty thousand. In twenty twenty-four, we did about two hundred and forty-one thousand. So we were up a little bit on that. Like I said, the last time I was here, when I was asking for an increase on the, we have noticed a rise in the, uh, the daily fee play. Uh, cart fee revenue, that number, kind of hard to compare that one because we did get the new cart fee last year in May, and we did go up five dollars on that, but we did have an increase of about sixteen thousand, um, on that. The non-member trophies, again, that goes back to, we also have people that come from out of town, even though they're not members, that'll play, they'll bring their own carts. Uh, we were, uh, actually, no, I said, we were down on that one about ninety-eight bucks, so we didn't really miss that much. Uh, on the next sheet, a sales summary. This is just pretty much a comparison of where we were at from December twenty-three through April of twenty-four of last year. So we did kind of the same comparison on December twenty-four to where we are through April now in twenty twenty-five. I kind of missed that number up there. Uh, memberships, we are down about three thousand dollars, but again, a lot of that didn't do, well, that's actually not true. So we are down a little bit on the memberships, about three thousand dollars. That's really not that much whenever you figure they're paying four or five hundred bucks a, a piece, so we're really not down that much there. Um, as far as the greens fees, we're up on that one. We were around eighty-five thousand, a little over eighty-five thousand last year. This year, we're at one of two, and the cart rentals, again, are up. Uh, last year, we were at fifty-five. This year, we're around seventy. I did a year-to-date total. That includes concessions, uh, merchandise sales. As of where we are, where we were in twenty twenty-four, this time last year, we're about three hundred and twenty-two thousand. This year, I've got us around about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So we've got a pretty decent, about thirty-five thousand dollar interest. So hopefully, we keep moving that deal, moving up. Uh, agronomic practices, this year, we were able to incorporate a full digital tee time, where members are able to come in, make their tee times, as well as called in, where in the past, you know, everything was handwritten, so now it's on a computer, it's a little bit easier to organize. Obviously, that helps me to look back at historicals and see, okay, how many memberships did we sell? How many greens fees did we sell? So that's been helpful. Um, an agronomic practice that we've incorporated pretty much weekly is vertical mowing on the greens. That's really helped out in a lot, in a lot of areas in the greens. We have some areas out there that do need some work, and I'm sure a lot of y'all have heard about it. We've got some edges out there that still haven't recovered from last year, but we are working hard on getting those back. So hopefully, in the next year, we get those to, get them to come back. Obviously, as y'all know, we had, we added a new rental cart since twenty twenty-four. Uh, we started using Golf Genius program last year. In about May, we started playing with it for our Tuesday night spins. It's been a really handy tool. We send out an email every Tuesday to anybody that's part of the golf association. It makes it easy for them to register. They're not having to call Pro Shop anymore. They literally click of a button on their phone, say that they're in or out. And we've seen an increase on our, uh, on our turnout on our Tuesday night spins. Right now, we're averaging probably about fifty players a week. So that's pretty good. When we were doing twenty-five, thirty a week, we got a lot of people coming in from out of town as well to play in that. Uh, in June of last year, we purchased a brush kit to help with, get a little bit better cut on the greens. Uh, I'm sure as y'all know, the temporary greens on number two and number thirteen were in play throughout the majority of the year last year. Those greens were in pretty bad shape. Uh, like I said, we did have the winter kill. Uh, I want to go ahead and touch on it now, but it's going to be later. We did purchase, the golf association actually purchased two greens covers for number two and thirteen greens to cover those during the winter, during the freeze months, so that we can try to protect those greens a little bit better. Also, just wanted to experiment with it, to just say, hey, this may be a purchase that's worth doing for more than just those greens in the future. Um, and the greens responded really well to those coming out of the world this year. Uh, we applied a different, we applied post-merger aside last year to the fairways, brooches, collars. We had a pretty bad problem with goosegrass and, uh, few grass and bad grass, and we pretty much got the majority of that cleaned up in those areas. We don't really have the budget to spray that wall to wall, so we just try to focus on the areas that you should be hitting. If you're out in the rough and you've got to deal with some weeds, you shouldn't be out in the rough, so.
You almost read it right.
Yes, exactly right. Uh, yeah, last August, we actually went with a little bit bigger aerification. Uh, we used a larger ton. I really, on the tee boxes and greens, they, they responded really well to it. A lot of those areas that we had problematic areas in really started to recover. Uh, we just ran out of hot days last year for a fully recovery, so I expect if we can get another fifty percent this year or more, over time, we'll eventually get those areas to fully recover. I think we will. Um, one of the goals last year was to get perennial rye grass on the seeds, or I'm sorry, perennial rye grass seed on the tee boxes before the wintertime this year. We have a lot of play, obviously, during the winter, but our tee boxes are so small out there, they take a pounding. So this time last year, we didn't have a lot of grass on the tee boxes, but if y'all been past the golf course, the tee boxes are doing really well. We get a lot of compliments on it, so it seems to be working good, so we'll be obviously doing that again next year. Uh, we tried to, we did some different pre-emergence, again, in the fairways. Uh, we tried to, we did some different pre-emergents, again, in the fairways, brooches, and collars, same deal. It was a pretty expensive product, but it worked really well, kept everything clean throughout the winter. One of those things we can really only afford to do it to just those areas. Uh, like I said, I already touched on two and thirteen on the greens covers. Um, we're implementing a solid meal time on greens, like I said, to try to help out with a lot of the bad spots that we have in some of those areas. We are working really hard to get those areas to recover. We are using a USGA-based sand-based green or greens, top dressing green sand for those areas. We did have some issues with the pump station last year. I mean, I don't think it's any secret. I've been pretty vocal about how old our irrigation system is, and we might need to consider some upgrades on that in the near future because we pushed that pump station pretty hard last year. We had some, uh, we had some issues as far as the, the pump station faltered out and going down. I mean, we were able to get it fixed, but just something to keep in mind for later. Uh, same thing on the satellite boxes, but except that's something we're talking about on C I P. Hopefully, we can get that upgraded next year. Uh, the Golf Association purchased us, uh, not only the greens covers, but also a turbine mower. We use that so that we can keep our fairways and tee boxes cleaned off. In the past, they were just using rough units to go out and mulch everything. Obviously, that was a lot of manpower and a lot of hours that were used there as well as gas, so that saved us on that. We applied some big ones to the greens, fairways, brooches, and collars for the winter months. That actually helped us free time coming out of winter dormancy this year because those products actually retain heat, so we came out of dormancy a little bit faster this year. Uh, basically, we installed an extension in an existing water line to create a fill station behind the naked shop. In the past, we were just using a water hose to fill our, uh, hundred, our two-hundred gallon spray tank. As you can imagine, that would take a long time to fill. We got a one-inch line over there, so we can fill it a lot faster than we had in the past. Uh, we did do a winter tree project this year. I'm actually surprised y'all didn't get any of the plates, uh, about the trees that came down, but luckily, we did it when we had those sixty-bottle-hour winds, so they may have something to do with it. I'm gonna, well. Uh, and the goal there was to promote some of the health with the shade issues that we have on a lot of those thin spots that we have on the greens. So hopefully next year, we can just continue to get some of those trees out, continue to improve and help prune and help those areas. We did restructure the parking lot at the main pro shop this year. Uh, we repaid the, the Eastman Road that runs between two and thirteen. And one of the big things I'm happy that we have, we actually hosted the Matnoff Tournament this year. That was a tournament that was hosted historically in Burnet for a lot of years. Uh, we had about a hundred and fifty players that filled that tournament up in about ten days. Um, we, so the two guys that fed that up for a while, I told them that I'd like to get a hundred bucks ahead if we're gonna be shut down for a whole weekend. They didn't bat an eye at it, so we profited about fifteen thousand that, that weekend on just that tournament alone. They were really happy with the way the tournament turned out, so they want to continue that and want to continue to have it here in our passes, so hopefully we can hold on to that tournament for a while. They also said that they have another two big tournaments. They call it the Blue City. That's in July. And they want to do round one in Landpasses, and then round two, I think, is gonna be Atlanta, so as of right now, we have that one on the books. Future goals. Um, again, would like to upgrade the irrigation system. Um, we're working hard with Golf Association on purchasing a vertical mowing unit to, so that we can start vertical mowing our fairways. I think that's gonna help our fairways out a lot. We've focused hard on the tee boxes. We've focused hard on the greens, so next year, I'm not, this year, in August, I'd really like to focus on the fairways. Um, we don't have a really good machine to aerify the fairways, so I am trying to contact some guys that I know in the industry that are willing to contract out and come out and aerify fairways, even if we just do nine holes this year and nine holes next year. If we keep that on a rotation, I think that's really gonna help our fairways out a lot. Another thing I'd like to see in the future would be upgrading the cart paths. I'd really like to get rid of the asphalt instead of just capping it every few years, two years, like we've been doing in the past. Hopefully, we can eventually get to, uh, get to concrete paths. Um, last thing, we want to incorporate the Golf Now System. I've been in contact with them. We can do it, but our bandwidth that we have for our internet just won't keep up with it right now at this point, so once we can get fiber or get a faster internet out there, I've talked to Kristi and Monica about it. Uh, it's really just a matter of, of the next thing on that. That's gonna help us be more organized on our tee times. We can actually allow for online tee time hooking. Um, and then it will also help with our, uh, organizing our inventory as well, so I know it's having a weak feeling. It's all right. You have any questions?
Any questions?
The city manager uses the decrease.
So.
Do you face some decreases as far as number?
No, as far as the, the, when we got the rental carts last year, nobody said anything. Not a word about that. May one, we're gonna go up on the daily fee dues. Obviously, people kind of know that we're going up on the memberships July one. I haven't heard anything. That's not to say that July one, they won't. Uh, the guys this week with taking tee times going into the weekend are out, obviously, on May one. Have been informing people on the front, that it's gonna be going up eight dollars. Been good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. City Manager's operational report.
Mayor and Council, at our last council meeting, I had told you guys that we could expect the structural engineering report at this meeting, and maybe there was some communication errors between LOC and Reliance. Um, so on April seventeenth, Kimberly emailed me that a draft report for the structural review would be submitted to them for internal review. Um, April twenty-fifth at noon, I have not, she was out at the office on Friday, so I haven't heard an update on whether she received that. But a final report being submitted on May second, so that puts the structural review on the May twelfth council meeting agenda. Um, it'll provide a summary of existing conditions and will provide multiple solution options for City Council's consideration. Additional items that will need to be considered for the hostess house that were removed from the original scope of the project include, um, finishing out the fire department connection. Uh, parking lot upgrade to meet ADA compliance. That would be required before we can occupy the facility and then certain furnishings in the building. Do you have a question?
Okay. Um, the C I P committee had their first meeting last week to review the status of current projects, and I took the time to really kind of orient them to some new formatting that we're using this year for each C I P project. Department heads are being asked to complete a justification sheet so that shows what year we anticipate the project to potentially be funded, where specifically the funding is coming from, justification for why they're making that capital improvement request, and what the long-term impact may or may not be if that project is not funded. So they will meet again on May at noon. Out of the airport, the A W system, uh, contract has been executed along with all associated documents. It will be installed and operational before the end of the fiscal year. The fuel tank pad, actually, the fuel tank is installed and fuel was ordered today, so there will be six thousand gallons delivered out there. It takes probably three days for that to be programmed, and then we'll be selling fuel to pilots, so we're really excited about that. And we have reviewed applications and narrowed down those applicants for the part-time airport manager positions. We'll be interviewing for that soon. We've gotten some really good applicants for that.
And then that A W system, that is the?
The weather system.
The weather, yeah, the circuit really wants that installed.
Yes, yeah, the pilots are excited. It's not like, um, lifeguard trains have completed the pools. Our meeting prep for opening, anticipate a Memorial Day weekend opening there. And then you have your self-repetition for our April anniversaries for that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments tonight. Uh, I wanted to take this time to thank each and one of your council guys and women and, uh, for your hard work. I know this is a, a labor of love and, you know, it's, it's not something that we do in our our normal nine-five or eight-five or seven or ten job. But, uh, you guys have been dedicated and I just want to thank, thank each and every one of you. Also, uh, along those lines, I wanted to just address, I know each one of our council members here have just a great passion for our community or willing to be sitting up here. And having that great passion for our community is, we always, always, always want to hear from our citizens. And it is just incredibly important that if a citizen has something to say, by all means, come and take those three-minute comments. And, uh, there was some stuff that came out in the newspaper that kind of had a negative feature when we had, uh, uh, our development project, the development here, and we were talking about that. We always give our presenters a whole lot more time than we'll give our, our citizens to talk, but I just, I wanted to, to just take that moment and just say, I, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm speaking for everybody here that it is important that we hear from you. We can only give you three minutes. And, uh, come and speak to the council because it, we, we're not everywhere. We don't know everything. And we want to hear from our citizens, and it's, it's just really, really important that we do, and, uh, thank you, guys.
New business, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of Storm seventy-fifth anniversary event on the five eighty sports complex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, along with the proclamation that we did this evening, I didn't just for the approval of the actual event. It has been vetted due to place of permanent. And we did go through and get the park sport approval as well via email just for the sake of time. We needed another month. We wanted to be able to advertise. So we did go through the proper channels. We think then we have worked with them as far as the um, logistics of the event. The woods would be held on Key Avenue. And it's strong, so we thought because of the magnitude of it, it'd be better suited at the five eighty sports complex. So at this time, we were just asking for your consideration of approval of the event to be held at five eighty sports complex on Thursday at four p.m.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just curious about the, the software stuff that they have to hire. We're paying for that, right?
Absolutely, yes. And that will be, as it gets closer, they know the size of the event, it'll be determined how many officers they do need, but the PD is aware. No cost to the city.
Anything else? All in favor?
Thank you.
Seven point two, discussion acceptance of fiscal year end twenty twenty-four audit.
If I may just, um, stay right here, Council, Mayor and Council.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Nathan White, I believe was here last time and presented the audit to you. I apologize that I was not able to attend that meeting. But if you have any questions or, or any concerns, I'm ready to answer those tonight.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the F one twenty-three, twenty-four audit report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action concerning the approval denied to approve with notification of the renewal of the interlocal corporation agreement for the purpose of the city providing fee-based fire inspection and investigation service to the county of Landpasses.
Mayor and Council, Barker will be here this evening. He's at training this week, but this is just an updated interlocal agreement between the county and the city for fire management services, fire investigation, and, and that sort. Before you do make a formal approval of it, considering that the direction the council goes, I just want to point out on page sixty-five, under section two point oh one, it says City of Lomita that would be changed to read County of Landpasses. We reuse this agreement for different entities, so we just missed that one before we got to the other.
Are there any differences from last year?
No, unless it be suggested, unless there don't, I believe there's.
I did get a new fee schedule, but I don't believe they've changed them. Those are the intercept.
Now I'll make a motion to approve and execute interlocal agreement in Landpasses County to provide fire inspection investigative services.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, the City Council, uh, the City of Landpasses Texas will meet and close the executive session for the Texas Government Code, chapter five five one, as follows. Section five five one, oh seven four personnel matters to deliberate the appointment and appointment evaluation reassignment duties of this one or public officer or employee, general manager, city manager, or other personnel matters as allowed by Texas Government Code, chapter five five one. Section five five one, oh seven four personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties or this one of a public officer or employee, E D C director and/or other personnel matters as allowed by Texas Government Code, chapter five five one, section five five one, point oh seven four personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, appointment, evaluation, reassignment duties of this one of a public officer, employee, city attorney and/or other personnel matters as allowed by Texas Government Code, chapter five five one. Section five five one, point oh seven one, one eight, and five five one, point oh seven two, consultation with an attorney by telephone and/or in person concerning matters upon with the city attorney, with the attorney has a duty and/or responsibility to report to the governmental body and/or other matters posted on the regular agenda. Section five five one, point oh eight seven, economic development to receive and evaluate information to receive regarding the Brody Estates Development Agreement that include in agreement terms financial responsibility or any other matters pertaining to that development. And get a motion to adjourn and do executive session.
Move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, coming out of the executive session, I'll make a motion to direct staff to calculate the credit based on the number of homes to be deducted from the total previous demand at Brody Estates.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stay. Thank you. We made a motion to adjourn. Move. Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.